And right now, it doesn't look like I have any requests to speak.
Okay. So I'm gonna go to the spreadsheet that we reviewed at our last meeting, the wrong one. And I've made, I did some grouping of this spreadsheet, so if you'll remember, this was what we looked at for the various planning services where we have the the service title, the current fee in the column next to that, next to that, the suggested fee for in most cases, one percent cost recovery.
Eric, we're looking at a different one.
Um, okay, then let me try this again.
Erica, it looks like Mary has a, looks like Mary has a question.
Oh, yeah, chat to to Mr. I already did took care of it.
Am I in the right spreadsheet?
Yeah, yes.
Let me, let me do that again. And so. So this is the spreadsheet that we looked at at the last workshop workshop where it had all the details. So the the service title, what the current fee is, what the suggested fee is for in most cases, one hundred percent cost recovery, the unit revenue based on the current fee, the unit cost, and then the unit profit or subsidy, so the negative number being a subsidy, meaning that the the fee is less than the cost. Um, how many units, annual units, so you get a idea of scope of how many times over the course of a typical year, these these applications occur? And then the suggested cost recovery, as I mentioned, in most cases, one hundred percent suggested cost recovery, and then the possible annual new revenue. And so you'll notice that there are some, the ones that have the larger revenue increases are in green, the ones that have the smaller revenue increases are in the in the the tan. And then there are some that where the fee is currently higher than what we calculated as the cost, and therefore the feed needs to be decreased to only cover the cost. And so that shows up as a positive, as a profit, or as a negative revenue, uh, because that fee will need to be decreased because you, of course, you can't charge more than the cost. Um, and so like I said, I've I grouped them by by kind of roughly departmental categories, and I didn't know if if the council wanted to um, kind of go through each of these broad groups and deal with it by exception, or if if we are if we're still talking about it at a at a higher level, I'm not sure where where we want to take the discussion at this point.
Jason, would you like to provide some input?
Sure. Um, if we can do, so we talked a little bit about this at the last workshop, maybe we can build on that and then lead it into, uh, hopefully try to get some groundwork for the meeting that we'll have on the council when they actually formulate the policy. I understand you're trying to narrow it down a little bit here. And with the two council members, I'm not sure we'll be able to fully narrow it down, but I think it's a discussion worth having.
Well, let me just kind of walk through and 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 you guys tell me where um, you wanna want me to stop. Um, so for instance, within community development, we identified about one point five million dollars potential new revenue if all the fees are put into place at one time. Within building and safety, most of that is, we're not recommending any change there. So there's the addition of a technology surcharge, but the broader building plan check and inspection services are staying unchanged. They're roughly covering its cost. Um, and so there really is, other than the the technology surcharge, there's a couple minor little fees. Um, and and so there's not really a lot of of change there. On the planning side, on the other hand, there is a quite a bit of change. And so as an example, we have our our CUP without site development, we're going from twelve hundred ninety six dollars as the current fee, and we calculated the cost is five thousand and seventy five dollars. And just as, um, so we're all on the same page as to kind of what's included in there. If we look at the report itself, and within appendix B of the report, and so as you see, we're down on page ninety four. For each of those S numbers, each of those services, we have a cost detail worksheet where we we identify from our discussions with staff, how much time is spent to process each one of these applications? And so for instance, we have a project planner at fifteen hour fifteen hours for each one of these. And that's where we we sat down with staff and we broke out the steps and we identified what's involved at this step and what's involved at this step, and we got to for this particular application for a project planner, fifteen hours for one application. Fifteen hours times that that position is fully allocated hourly rate is two thousand and six, two thousand six hundred thirty dollars. Because when we say fully allocated hourly rate, is everybody able to see the hourly rate detail?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, we have for the project planner, a fully burned hourly rate of hundred seventy five dollars now. And so salaries are just roughly at less than a third of that. And then you add infringed benefits, and then you add in maintenance operations costs, general supplies within the department. And then you add an overhead cost. So this is citywide overhead. So sheriff, city council, and city manager, and finance, and building maintenance, and IT, but also departmental overhead, the clerical staff and the the management staff in the department are part of that cost also. So it's like a business, you identify, what are your costs? And we're looking at about a two to three, um, time, two and a half time increase on the salary. So we did that for every position. And that's how we come up with our unit cost, that unit time, times that times that fully allocated hourly rate is that unit cost. We estimated that there's gonna be about eight of these a year, so the total cost for all eight is is that last column of numbers. So we're saying that each one cost about five thousand dollars, and for all eight of them, it therefore costs about forty thousand dollars. So that is how we got to the numbers. And of course, we did this per every service in the report. You'll have these that those matching cost detail fees. And so that's how we got to these speed numbers. We're saying this is what it costs today. And for at least in the development area, we're saying that the development community should pay that cost and not the taxpayer. Of course, at the end of the day, it's the council that decides that, but that's what the recommendations in this report are based on.
Eric, may I add on that? Um, our objective is not to put a hundred percent of all employees into these fees. We we do a check, um, before and after to make sure that the time spent on these fee-based services are just that. And we summarize up the fee-based time, and we look at the remainder time, and we decide where that goes. In that simplistic chart that you showed us earlier, there are those two categories. There is fee-based services, and then there's tax-based services. And we make sure that it's as reasonably accurate as we can how our every staff is allocated out. Cause our objective is not to inflate these fees. Our objective is to find out um, what the true cost of these fees are.
That's absolutely right. We're not the, for instance, in the planning department, we're not, we're not saying all of the cost of planning should be recovered through fees, but just those that are spent, time spent on each of these various applications and not all the other advanced planning work, uh, ordinances and such that will continue to be tax-supported.
Uh, Eric?
Yeah.
I don't know if this is a point to pause or for some comments that came in. Do you want me to start uh, working through those? Cause they are, I think foundational of what you're talking about, but I don't want to catch you in the middle of what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, I think this is a good time.
Okay. Um, so yeah, initial question was, was there an initial recommendation to your fees? And I think you're covering that and you'll continue to cover that. Um, but another question is, uh, you're talking about the overhead such as for police finance support staff, but isn't that overhead already covered in the budget?
Well, a- all of these costs are covered in the in the budget. And so then it's just a question of who's gonna pay for it. So the administrative cost, we're saying that's, they're not providing services to the customer, they're providing services to other departments. And so they should be part of the cost of those other departments. And so that's what we're saying is we're coming up with that business model to say, here's what a cost provides services to your customers. Um, and so the administrative cost is allocated in that way. And then for those people that provide services to the to the public, to your customers, which of it could could be charged a fee or is charged a fee? And which of it is more a community-supported service that, you know, even if you wanted to, you couldn't charge a fee? And so all these, all these costs are budgeted, all these costs are occurring. The question is, who's gonna pay for it?
Hmm, okay. And then another comment, or it looks like maybe the last comment at this point, is you were talking about what it costs now, and was there analysis as to whether the cost is appropriate? Or whether there are strategies that could reduce the cost before raising the fee?
Right. And so this is not a management study. We did not come in and talk about how it should be done. We wanted to know how it was being done. And and oftentimes, when there are inefficiencies in the process, it has to do with what staff is required to do under the code. Uh, not necessarily because staff is being inefficient. And so that's definitely a discussion that can and should be had as to are there are there areas that can't, that changes can be made to the code to streamline the process? Do do all of these applications need to go to the planning commission? Do all these applications need to go to the city council? And have that discussions with with, of course, city council and and all the interested parties. But it's that that's usually a process that takes a while. And so the council has to decide, is that something we're we're willing to put off? And continue to have the the subsidy while we're trying to identify areas where there could be some streamlined. Um, it it's it's not something that just happens overnight and usually takes a while to have that discussion.
And and I think related to that, then there was a question at the last workshop, I think by Councilmember Waterfield, may maybe Mayor Patino about, um, much of this work being mandated and how much is mandated. And I know we've been doing the analysis since then, but I'm not sure if the analysis is complete for this point, or whether it's for the um, the council meeting, but it seemed like nearly all of this is mandated at some level.
Right, yeah, it's, you know, there's, there's things under the state code that the city is required to do. Uh, you know, the departments can certainly speak in more detail to that. There are, there are a handful of services in here that have the the, um, you see the fee restricted by law where it has the C comment in this column here that the state has actually put a limit on how much can be charged for that fee. But I think the the fee mandate discussion is a broader discussion than that.
Eric, before we move on, I just want to remind, um, that our our interpreters are asking that, um, we speak at a moderate pace. Um, so
I thought I was.
So they can keep up with the interpretation.
All right, are there any more?
Sorry, I'm muted. Yeah, there's one more follow-up that came in. Sorry to talk over you. Um, the meanings of the colors again, you can go over that.
Sure. It's really just, yeah, it's really just to give an idea of scale. And so in column I here, where it talks about the profit subsidy, if it's in red, it's got a a large subsidy. If it's in tan, it's got a small subsidy. And there's some that are in green where there's a profit. And so, and then on the column N, it's the same kind of thing, just kind of flip-flop. If it's in green, there's a large possible new revenue. If it's in tan, there's a small possible new revenue. And if it's in red, there's a negative possible new revenue. There's a loss of revenue because the fee needs to go down. And so it's really just to give the the reader a a at a quick glance, what are the ones that are kind of I wouldn't say more important, but have moved the needle in a bigger way.
And there's certain services that are highlighted yellow. What do those represent again?
Those are ones that, as we wanted to have discussion with the council, I wanted to make sure that the council spent time on them, that, you know, so I highlighted the the admin downtown permits because they're currently by by policy from the past, charged at no cost. And we put in there that this should be at one hundred percent cost recovery. So we want, I want, I want to make sure that the council notices that and sees that. And for instance, same type of thing on the pre-application reviews, where there's a big change in the fee, but we've also created a credit. So that, for instance, on an administrative pre-application review, there's a four thousand dollar fee. But if that project actually goes forward within six months, then the fee is credited towards future fees. And so wanted to make sure they saw. So there's a handful of services in here where I, you know, I want to make sure that the council didn't just glide over. Are there any, any other comments?
We have no hands up at this time.
Yeah. And then another ones that I've highlighted are appeals. There's big changes in the appeals and want to make sure that the council uh, notices those because those are often important. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and just kind of broadly go through each of the groups and have people stop me when they want me to stop. Uh, the engineering services, there's some 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 bigger changes here. Encroaching permits have actually relatively minor changes, depending on the the size of the project. Improvement inspections, again, these fees are, depending on what where you're at at the valuation point for the inspection side, the fee could be going down, um, or it could be going up a little bit. Same type of thing on the plan check side, depending on on where you're at. The, um, the fee could be going down, but in most cases, the fee is gonna be going up, especially as it goes higher up along the valuation scale. We've added some new fees, traffic control plan check, usually related to encroachments. Uh, grain plan checks. Added fees for those. We've increased the fees for grading inspections and, um, minor decreases on the tentative parcel map. And to be distinguished, there's the engineering tentative parcel map separate from the planning parcel map. So some relatively minor increases. We did add a couple of appeal fees, appeal to the traffic committee, appeal of a traffic committee decision to the city council. Uh, trench resurfacing if the if the city needs to reset, resurface a trench, or if it's, um, the the applicant wants the city to resurface the trench, we added a fee for that. And so miscellaneous kind of catch-all fees within engineering. So nothing really dramatic on the engineering side. Before I move on to the others, I just want to, you know, the community development, of course, is the the biggest number. It's the one that has the biggest increases in fees. And it's certainly something that the council will need to decide, A, wh- where does it stand on cost recovery policy? Is this something that should be one hundred percent cost recovery? But B, do we want to do it over a couple, two to three, maybe even four years? So that it's not just this big increase happening all at one time and providing a shock to the development community, but that's something that could be phased in over a period of time. Um, code enforcement services, there's some some minor increases there, but as I mentioned, it's the those fees are largely designed to to, uh, generate, uh, compliance. And so even though there's a number of new fees, we're not projecting a lot of new revenue because it's something we want to either keep to a minimum, or it's something that we only charge as a last resort, even though you're doing twenty-six hundred inspections, there probably only will be a handful of people that you actually charge that fee for. Uh, we did add an appeal within code enforcement, code enforcement, appeal of a code enforcement decision. We did add fees for weed abatement, so that the city doesn't become the preferred contractor to, um, remove weeds on private lots. There's a processing fee in addition to the to the, um, removal cost of the of the weeds on that property. And we made some minor adjustments to the code enforcement fines and just put together the municipal code and building code under one, um, fine schedule and increase that minimum first fine to two hundred and fifty dollars. Again, more meant to get compliance and not generate revenue. On the fire side, it's mostly fire prevention, and so it is a number of fees related to sprinkler systems, uh, fire protection systems, fire alarm systems. Uh, so there are some larger increases, I mean, hundreds of dollars of increases in 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 those areas.
Eric, Ms. Mary has her hand raised, and there was a question in the chat.
Okay.
Thanks. I would, that I, that's what I wanted to bring up. There is a quick question in the chat I wanted to read and um, respond to. I don't think Eric will actually be able to respond to this one, but we'll we'll take this one now. It says, um, how does the city currently budget for anticipated fee income? So these fees, when we do our budget, the departments, um, will provide finance and the budget team with what they estimate the fees will be, will will come in. And they do that based on their, um, knowledge of how often they do, um, and what the fees are currently um, that that we, the fees that are set right now. So they they make their best estimate using that, and um, that's how we input those.
Uh, I just, and the goal of doing that is to make sure we have the staff available to do the work that we anticipate will be coming.
All right. Um, and then with with within fire prevention, there is the time spent to review building and safety plans and inspect that for, uh, general, um, fire protection. Currently, it's just a flat fee of forty-five dollars per plan, whether it's a, you know, a a patio or a a, um, a brand new shopping center. And so we're more scaling that to the size of the project. And so it's more, it's designed to be thirty-five percent of of the building and plan check, building plan check and permit fees for this project. Various different code inspection and fire permits for, um, special types of businesses that require extra fire, um, review. And this is, um, there's some larger increases there for those types, special types of businesses that have explosives or lumber yards or pyrotechnics and et cetera. Same kind of thing for for temporary tents, there's some bigger changes there. Various life safety inspections for hotels, motels, assembly occupancies, hazardous material facilities, and also multi-family dwelling inspections, apartment buildings. And so we have some some, um, larger increases for apartment building, um, inspections. For care home, daycare facility. Uh, fire business inspection for those handful of businesses that require extra fire, uh, prevention review. Um, engine company inspections is, they're not, the city is not currently doing that. So we set that fee up in case it's something that the city has the staff to do in the future. Um, and some kind of catchalls here. The false false alarm response fee is just rounding rounding that up. Again, that's the fee more designed to get compliance than to raise revenue. Um, some response fees on the operation side for, uh, um, emergency ambulance to hospital, um, assist as well as a lift assist for non-emergency purposes. Has
Eric?
Response, yes.
While you're working on fire, and there is a question or a comment in the chat that refers to fire it fire prevention seems like a perfect example of an activity that while it may be triggered by a user has a direct and important general public benefit.
Um, I I could certainly see that argument. Um, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it'll be up to the council to decide how much of the public should pay for that. Um, but yeah, I certainly would understand why someone would want to make sure that their neighbor went through these things so that if their house catches on fire, that my house doesn't catch on fire.
And and if you really look at fire, um, the majority is tax-supported, fire response, uh, the paramedics, that's, that's all tax-supported. What we're talking about now are individual permits and inspections related to that business or that home. And that definitely benefits that business or house.
Right. All right, uh, moving on to police. So again, false alarm response, we did make some larger increases there because, uh, we didn't feel that the current fee was was getting people's attention enough. And again, we're designed to get compliance, um, instead of raising revenue. Some individual business-related reviews that require background checks because of the nature of the business, whether it be a, um, gun dealer, massage parlor, or, um, we also have a tobacco retailer, which is more the ongoing, um, review of a tobacco retailer within the city. Taxi cabs, vehicle release. DOI accident, uh, concealed weapon permits, which are limited by the states, are the example of where it's written in the state code that the city can only charge a certain fee. Clearance letters, and so some minor things there. And then, as I mentioned, for recreation services, we're not recommending any changes to the fees. Um, but we are hoping that the council will have a larger discussion about does it want to make changes? Does it, is it comfortable with what's being subsidized and and and, uh, maybe what isn't being subsidized? So the suggested column here is really just reflecting the status quo that these fees are currently subsid, or recovering this amount of their total cost. And as you see, it's it's far less than than, um, than one hundred. And so it's, this is something that really requires a totally separate discussion because we can't just come in and say that it it costs this much to per participant to provide an adult sports program, therefore that's what you should charge. Um, the the fee would most likely be at set at a level that people wouldn't pay it, and they have that choice to go to the other city or just not do the program at all. And so this, again, I hope that that discussion is is still gonna be had in the future, but we're not recommending any changes to that at this point. The maintenance and enterprise services are all within the the utilities. And so before what we're talking about, that the taxpayers make nothing difference, now what we're really saying is that the rate payer is making up the difference, and that these things are currently covered as part of the rates for water, solid waste and 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 wastewater. And and is that appropriate? Is that what the council wants to do? Or are there certain things where the customer is asking for a level of service over and above everybody else? And they should therefore pay more. So that's why we have all of these new fees within within solid waste, for instance, including, you know, right now, there's a solid waste tabout service where for some customers, um, only eighteen within the city, the 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 city will actually go in the backyard and get the the, um, the the container, dump it, and put it back. And so, um, this is really a question of, should instead of the taxpayer make up the difference, should the rate payer make up the difference, or should the people receiving that higher level of service pay that difference? And same thing on the water side.
Uh, Eric, Angie has her hand up. Um, she has a comment.
Okay.
Oh, hi, Eric. Um, I just wanted to mention, we have a comment that came through, and basically it says fireworks booths are run by nonprofits. That's the kind of idea that gets people fired up. Why even suggest it?
Um, and that's, that it's it's something that, um, this is what it costs to to, um, review the booths. There is a fair amount of time spent on on this, and right, we're not actually suggesting a large change. It's going from five forty-one to six sixty-five. But, um, yes, if they are, they are, um, primarily run by, um, nonprofits and not entirely run by nonprofits. And so it's just a question of that profit, that profit that the the nonprofit is making on that uh, fireworks stand to help support what they do, should the city, uh, pay, get a little bit of that for their time. So that's what we're recommending here. But again, the council will decide which of those is more important to the community that we we want to subsidize. So on the water side, we're recommending some new fees, but mostly related to that said angle stop repair. This is where someone breaks the angle stop on their meter, usually because it got turned off. And there, they want to turn that on again, or they actually break the meter itself. And in wastewater, there are some additional fees being added for certain businesses that, that have an extra level of wastewater runoff. And that there's a higher level of review that is needed. And so these are certain businesses within the city. And right now there's no fee, so it's just being paid for out of the rates. And so a number of different wastewater fees that are related to these different types of, of businesses. Then on the administrative side. As I mentioned, the delinquent water turnoff fee, we are making some changes there. So when the, the city does get to a point where it's able to turn off for delinquency, there are some limitations because of SB 998, Senate Bill 998. And so wanted to make sure the council sees that. Some other fees related to, again, where the, the the app, the user is, is damaging the meter or is continuing to use the water even after the, the meter has been shut off for non-payment. On the business license side, there's a processing fee, there's a tax and then there's a processing fee to get that regulatory information. So that, for a new business, it's going up just from 20 to 22. But for an ongoing renewal business, we're suggesting a $25 per renewal fee per business to cover the cost of processing those renewals. And then we're suggesting a new fee for credit card processing. The city spends almost half a million dollars a year for credit card fees where it's charged by, you know, the credit card company for basically the merchant fees of about $500,000 a year. And right now it's, it's something that the taxpayers paying, paying that amount. We're suggesting that those people that charge use their credit card should be charged to two and a half percent of the amount they charge to recover those costs instead of being passed on to everybody, whether you're paying with a credit card or not.
Eric, speaking to credit cards, there is a comment in the chat, what is the breakdown on credit card charges in terms of business transactions versus individual transactions?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, my, my guess is if you're, if you're wondering what the credit card companies charge the city, it's, it's the same rate. It's usually two to three percent of any transaction. So if, if an individual comes in and makes a hundred dollar charge, let's say it's three percent. If a developer comes in and makes a $10,000 charge, it's still three percent. But ultimately the city is paying half a million dollars in credit card charges or merchant fees is what it's called.
I, I might chime in here also. It, the, the city that we don't have the, the detail to that detail of our transactions. We know the number of transactions, but it's not necessarily to the detail of how many are individuals versus businesses.
And residents versus residents in my time as finance directors, I didn't see much. Or I don't, we didn't have any data from that either. You could buy the report, but it's, it's cost versus cost. And I think the idea of recovering for that cost is, should be there.
So that, that's all the services. That's what we're proposing. As I've mentioned many times, the, the council will decide what, what they want to subsidize and what they don't. Of course, based on feedback from, from the community as well as kind of what the community values. And so that's kind of the next point in the discussion is what, what does the council want to do with this? What areas does it feel comfortable with 100% cost recovery? What areas does it not? And even when it does feel comfortable with 100% cost recovery, is it something that they want to phase it in to, to ease, ease that bite of that large fee increase?
Eric, I want, there is another comment about the credit card. So to read that one, seems like there's a cost to the city, whether they get paid by credit card versus check or cash. Checks and cash require handling except, et cetera. And I mean, that's true, but the credit cards themselves also, we get charged by the credit card company for doing, having that. So it's a direct charge that they're charging the city.
Right. And, yeah. And city staff handles credit card transactions as well.
And, and it's also something that scales up by the amount charged. And so as you mentioned, if somebody pays, a developer pays a $10,000 fee with a credit card. Well, that's a much higher charge. And so we're paying a $50 fee with their credit card, even though that processing time takes the same amount of time. The city is being charged a lot more for those larger dollar charges.
The, the, the follow-up line muted, sorry. No, the follow-up question was, so we, we are proposing the residents pay half a million dollars for these credit card fees. And I think you've answered it, but maybe you can expand on it is these are already fees the city taxpayers are paying. And the question is should the people gaining the service be paying these fees or the general taxpayers?
Right, exactly. And it's, you know, as we have said throughout this, all these costs are occurring. It's just a question of who's going to pay for it. And with this particular fee, it could also mean that, that developer may not decide, hey, it's not worth it for me to pay a $10,000 charge on my credit card. Let me write a check. And so that eases the burden on the city. So for those larger payers that kind of move the needle a lot, it could make them rethink it and, and process it in a different way. But right now the taxpayer is paying.
Those were all the comments at this point.
All right. And so that's, that's all I have at this point. And so it's, if, if we're not ready for a council discussion, I'll throw it back to Jason and Mary.
Yeah, if there's other questions or people want to raise their hands or send in chats, we're happy to answer them and further discuss this. The goal again tonight was to discuss the analysis behind the fee study. And as we mentioned, it's been several years since we've done this kind of study. It's an important exercise for a city to go through to understand what costs a city incurs and for the public and, and the elected leaders to identify where those costs should be born and who should be bearing those costs. And after these workshops, we anticipate going to the city council with a council agenda item for approval of a policy around these costs as Eric and Mary have been talking about. And our goal is to be able to do that ahead of the fiscal year or to include it, that, that information, those decisions in the updated budget, which will go to the council for approval in June to start in July. And the reason there is the council wants to increase fees in order to be able to provide additional planners or additional fire inspectors, some of those things where it, it looks like the fees are shortly are really not covering the cost of the service. We would want to be able to provide that into the budget and make sure we're aligning the service expectations with the revenue. Other questions or comments or, or anything, Mary?
Mr. Stillwell, we do have a hand up from a member of the public, Mr. Steven Gerasi.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. My name's Steven Gerasi. I'm a resident here in Santa Maria. And I just want to continue about the credit card transactions because I think it's very important that the city understand, you know, where the, who's paying those charges. If it is, as Mr. Johnson says, primarily by business users for fees and things like that. Okay, probably makes sense, but you know, if it's, it's residents like me who pay their water bill, their trash bill with credit cards, that's problematic. And I think that, you know, you really need to understand what the makeup is of those charges because half a million dollars coming out of pockets of the residents. That's asking quite a lot. And I would, you know, encourage the council to really look into that and ask staff to provide them with that information. Thank you.
Eric or Chu, can you talk a little bit, if we did know that business customers are paying credit cards versus residential customers, could we bifurcate our fee to charge the two and a half percent, say, to the business customer, not charge it to the residential customer?
Well, I, I, in my opinion, having a credit card fee is as direct as possible. And if a resident is using it to pay for their water bill, then they would only be charged at two and a half percent if they choose to use the credit card. And they would not be paying for the developer's percentage of the credit card. Because the developer will come in and use his credit card if he chooses. And he'll be charged that transaction fee. Right now it's sort of convoluted. I see that Mary does a good job at separating it out, saying, well, I don't know if you could, that water charge right now. The merchant fee for water charges is paid for by the water fund. And the rest I assume is for the general fund. That's not a possibility. Then it's just all convoluted right now. And if we make the assumption that the developers are the one right, you know, using the large credit card transactions, then it could go that way. But all in fairness, water consumption or the water bills, I assume at an annual basis is probably a bigger amount. We're talking about millions of dollars that water customers are using their credit card to pay for that. But it's a lot more transaction versus a developer, which has, you know, bigger amounts, but not that much in totality. So if, if the city does go with a credit card charge, obviously you know, the whole overhead cost, the half a million dollars is directed towards the user and the overhead charge cost is reduced slightly by half a million dollars. And in the end, it, it evens out. Or hopefully the, the, it's not subsidized as much by the general fund anymore.
And, and one option is some, some agencies will charge. If the amount charged is less than a certain dollar amount, say less than $500, then there is no charge. And if it's more than $500, then there is the two and a half percent charge. That of course means that the good part of that $500,000 would not be recovered. But that's one option if the city council decides it wants to continue to subsidize the people paying the utility bill, but not subsidize those larger transactions over a certain dollar now.
To be clear, if we're talking about 500,000 in fees, well, that's not, is that the? Well, I mean,
That's the amount charged by the bank.
Okay, for all credit card transactions, so that at two and a half percent, that means the city has $20 million in credit card transactions a year?
Yes.
And, and I will like to clarify that what I said that we didn't have to that detail. What I understood the question to be is if we knew how many were actual individuals. We do know how much is to, say, the water fund for water bills or for the different departments and what fee was, what type of, type of transaction it was. But we do not know if even in the water bills, there are businesses in there as well. So I don't know which one's a business and which ones transaction is or the other. We don't have that kind of, we don't keep that kind of detail on that.
Mary and Mr. So, Angie has raised her hands, make a comment. And then Mr. Morris has made a comment in the chat. If we haven't read it, it just says, seems like it would you would want to encourage people to pay their water bill online via credit card rather than queue up at city hall to hand over their cash or check.
Well, I'll, I'll comment on that is I know cities that have water department. There's another option, which is direct deposit, ACH and direct pay. And that really saves the city a lot of time and, and cost because it's connected to the water billing system versus a credit card, which is still a manual transaction every time. So if anything, a credit card fee may discourage people to use their credit card because obviously we get points, I get points to use my credit card. And, and you, you overlook that and you set up the automatic payment. And for staff in the water department, the automatic payment not only saves time for the city, but also it, it reduces the amount of late payments as well. So I think the, the result of a policy such as that will help the water department.
All right. Other questions or comments or final thoughts?
No one has their hand raised at this time to speak.
Okay.
And we still only have council member Escobedo and Waterfield at this time.
Okay. And we'll, as is typical, we'll accept written comments ahead of the council meeting. We anticipate again having this item come to the city council ahead of the time when staff needs to begin working on the budget. So maybe in April, second meeting in April, maybe April 20th, somewhere in that timeframe. So as we'd encourage folks, if there's other questions or comments to submit them or keep your eye out for the council meeting and feel free to submit comments at the council meeting as well. And
Mr. Stillwell, and before we end up closing, I would like to thank Simone and Carla from English Justice Initiative, Justice Communities. I hope I said that right. They've provided simultaneous, simultaneous interpretation for us for both this workshop and the last one. And so we've really appreciated their help and participation in these two workshops. And just wanted to say thank you to them.
Indeed. Thank you. And it's nice having, it's a tough job, I'm sure. And it's nice to have their involvement there to be able to help people have more accessibility to the information we're discussing. So yeah, I agree. Thank you. All right. Well, I think we can wrap up this workshop. And again, thank you for everyone's participation. And if there's other questions or comments, again, Mary Harvey and I and Angie and the staff are here for you if, if you want to have questions offline. And we look forward to bringing this item forward to the city council as well. So yeah, thank you everyone. And again, thank you Eric and Chu for working through the analysis. And thank you Mary and Angie for being able to get us to this point. Appreciate it. And thanks staff and council members for attending the workshop as well. And thanks Rhonda for hosting.
Yes, you're welcome. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Everyone. Have a good night.
Good night. Good night.